Councilwoman Kalmer is going to give us our invocation. And Councilman Tipton, the pledge of allegiance, so please stand for that.
Everyone bow their heads with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us here again this evening. We thank you for every seat filled here tonight. We thank you for dedicated employees like Donnie Carlson. We ask that you'll bless him in his future journey. And we ask that you will always keep him in our memories and in our hearts. We praise you and thank you for the young people who have placed themselves in leadership positions. And we ask that you will be with them over the next year and bless their efforts. We thank you for businesses in our community. And we thank you for blessing them with the ability to pay it forward so that they can bring our community together, such as the reunion of old friends. We continue to work hard and we ask that you continue to remind us that all we do here today is for the pursuit of a better Pascagoula and for your glory. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next up, any amendments to the agenda by either council or the staff? All right. So is there a motion to approve the agenda? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anyone here to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Item that is not on the agenda. All right. So we're going to start now with community recognitions. Start the evening with swearing in of the 2019-2020 Mayor's Youth Council. So, all of troops in. Thank you all for coming tonight. I appreciate everybody attending. I certainly appreciate each of you joining the Mayor's Youth Council and being accepting these leaderships and positions and being active in your local government. So I want to thank everyone else for coming. The Pascagoula Mayor's Youth Council was created in 2014. Our goal is to provide opportunities for high school students to engage in local government, learning how it operates and see how the services are provided. These students take on responsibility in addition to their regular schoolwork, sports, and recreational commitments. Church and other clubs encourage even require to get involved in certain city activities such as these council meetings and volunteer community events such as downtown for the holidays and cruising the coast, which we couldn't do without those guys because they're such a great asset when we have a big overwhelming crowd like that. We also want to hear from them and encourage them to share their ideas with us. Ultimately, we want them to leave the program feeling like ambassadors of the city. And if they leave for school or military service or work, we want them to know that this is home. We want them to come here to live, work, and raise their families and hopefully retire. Welcome each of you for the Pascagoula Mayor's Youth Council Class of 2020.
I get the distinct honor and privilege to introduce Judge Krebs. Born in Pascagoula, Judge Krebs serves as the circuit court judge having been elected and re-elected to the bench in 2003 after practicing law for 28 years. He earned his Juris Doctor from the University of Mississippi in 1974 and was admitted to the bar that same year. He's been married to his wife Cynthia Krebs for 49 years. Congratulations Judge. And a member of Our Lady of Victory's Catholic Church. Judge Krebs has served on numerous boards and committees including the Jackson County Bar Association, the State Bar, the American Judiciary Society, and the NCA Bar Foundation. He has served his community as a member of the Jackson County Historical Society, the Pascual Historic Preservation Committee, United Christian Outreach, the County Civic Action Committee, Leadership Jackson County, American Red Cross, the United Way, and the La Pointe Krebs Foundation. So we want to thank Judge Krebs for all he does for our community and for being here tonight with us to swear in this newest class of the Mayor's Youth Council. Judge?
This is a big deal. You heard all the things are expected of you, but it starts here tonight. So when you raise your right hand, I'm going to ask you all to do that. That starts it for you. Thomas More was the chancellor under Henry VIII before he had his head cut off, along with a lot of the wives. And he said that what is a man's oath but a promise to his God? So you start that here tonight. Fair enough? So what I'm going to do is I'm going to stand out of the way. Will your parents on this side as well? All this side. Well, I'm going to stand over here against the wall, but I want you to look forward. I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. And then we're going to take the oath. Is that fair enough? Everybody's got to raise your right hand, all right? And then I'm going to say, state your name, then you state your name, and then we'll say the rest of it in tandem. Fair enough? Okay. Well, let's start then. Raise your right hand. Face all these folks with their big pictures. You ready? Aye. State your name. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Mississippi and obey the laws thereof that I am not disqualified from holding the office of member of the City of Pascagoula's Mayor Youth Council that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter. So help me God. Smile at the pictures.
Counsel members, if we could get you to stand up, you might get a couple pictures of you all as well at your honor. If you join the mayor, that'd be terrific. All right.
All right, the next step is we're going to, the mayor's going to give this to you. I'm going to go in the back because you're going to have to sign the oath and you have to sign my presence, okay? All right. So thank you all very much for having me, Councilman Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you Judge.
Okay, now I'm going to present the certificates. The first one is Laura Grace Fondre. Adam Harrington. David Sanabria, is that right? Amy, Abby Brandenstein. Caroline Floyd. Carmen Miller. Will Mitchell. Grant Wells. Caroline Faso, Facio? Thank you, thank you so much for attending tonight with our, with our class. And we're going to move on with the council meeting. They're going to be in the back signing. If the parents want to go back there and join them or take some pictures while they're doing that, you're welcome to do that too. Where is my agenda? Grab my agenda for me. All right, that's done.
I remember I said it's because it's NBA draft week.
Thanks.
Jalen Rose got drafted a number of years ago. You're on that red list. The NBA draft is weekly, that's an honor.
Man, I don't, I never get tired of doing that. That is such a great feeling.
I was telling you, that's awesome.
Those guys are awesome. They really are. All right. We have an unhappy citizen? Okay, we're going to move on now. The next is our business spotlight. Tonight, we're pleased to feature our local Dairy Queen as our business spotlight. This is truly a locally owned and operated business, part of the popular national chain of quick-serve restaurants where you can find hot food and cool treats.
Quality food, sweet treats, and outstanding customer service is what you can expect at Dairy Queen in Pascagoula. Stop by their location on Denny Avenue for lunch, dinner, or dessert any day of the week from 10:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. Customers can walk in and visit Dairy Queen's Cakes and Treats Refrigerator and purchase a Dilly Bar, Blizzard Cake, or Ice Cream Tretzel for your next birthday, anniversary, or other special occasion. Something you might not know about our local Dairy Queen is that it has been family-owned and operated since its doors opened in 2013. It is the only nationally branded quick-serve restaurant with owners who actually live, work, and play in the city of Pascagoula. Owner Parker Pugh and his family are passionate about bringing top-quality businesses to our area, and our local Dairy Queen is a great example of their "live and shop local" philosophy. Stop by today and support your Pascagoula Dairy Queen grill and chill.
Thank you for the video. We just want to shout out to Parker Pugh and his team and everyone at Baber Strunk's Businesses for making Pascagoula the headquarters for all your enterprises. Next on the agenda is proclamations. We have four very important proclamations this evening, recognizing people and organizations that mean a lot to our city and community. Before we read these off and formally recognize those that are here, I'd like to make a motion that the council ratify these altogether. Does anyone have a chance to look at these?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we ratify collectively the proclamation for Fire Chief Donnie Carlson, recognizing Navigator Credit Union Day, the Pascagoula Negro Carver High School Reunion, and the Hometown Heroes Day.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First proclamation I'll read and present. It is in honor of the years of service to this city by our retiring fire chief, Donnie Carlson. Chief, please join me up front here if you would. Yep, that's not mine. Or his. That's not. We proclamations got all over the place. Come on Chief. You look like you've been changed in a while, haven't you? You retired. It did you more. A well-deserved one too. Whereas Donnie Carlson is retiring, there's fire chief of the City of Pascagoula after a successful career in municipal service. And whereas in 1994, Mr. Carlson joined the Pascual Fire Department after serving in the U.S. Navy from September of 1989 to September of 1993. And whereas during his tenure with the city, Donnie had moved up in the ranks starting from a firefighter from April 1994 to October 2013. And whereas on May 2001, Donnie was promoted to lieutenant. And whereas on February 2008, Donnie was promoted to captain. And whereas on October 2013, Donnie was promoted to deputy fire chief and served in this position until February 2016. And whereas February 2016, Donnie was promoted to fire chief and served in this position until June 2019. And whereas for 25 and a half years, Donnie has served the citizens of Pascagoula well with numerous others' accomplishments, being a nationally registered EMP for 24 years and fire investigator for 10 years. And whereas Donnie was instrumental in lowering the city's Pascagoula insurance rating as well as securing numerous brands. You did a good job. Whereas upon his retirement, he will be missed by his colleagues and employees but can now enjoy things in life which he so richly deserves. Now therefore, I, Dane Maxwell, Mayor of Pascagoula, on behalf of the city council, do hereby extend our congratulations to Donnie Carlson for his dedication and service to the community on this 18th day of June in the year of our Lord 2019. Congratulations. I don't do this a lot because they're going to keep you dry. But what I want to do is basically ceremonial handing of the key to Donnie. We actually are going to present him with a, with a plaque where this key is going to be in there with the proclamation, and it'll be where he can proudly display it on his wall at your new job. So although I'm going to formally give you the key, I'm going to snatch you back. Here, let me, let me, where's, where's Carol, yeah, you. I want to get a picture of the key. And then we're going to put this on his wall for the new fire chief.
One, two, three. And two more. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again Chief.
I still have a lot of experience in Pascagoula. Forty-five years, it's been a very rewarding career for me. And I am moving on to South Carolina to be a new fire chief in another municipality and hopefully I can make a big impact like I did here, so thank you.
Next proclamation is to recognize Navigator Credit Union on their milestone of serving our community. Councilman Burrow will read and present this.
Is anyone here from Navigator? All right, all of you would bear with me here. This is a proclamation that we just approved by the city council. Whereas on June 24, 1939, seven Ingalls Shipyard workers met on the east bank of the Pascagoula River to found the Mutual Benefit Credit Union. And whereas the name was soon changed thereafter to Ingalls Employees Credit Union and in December of 1939 officially began operations to offer savings and lending services to its membership base, Ingalls Shipbuilders. And whereas for 55 years, Ingalls Employees Credit Union was exclusively located on the Ingalls East and West Bank with three branches until 1994, when the first branch was opened off shipyard property on jack worthy causes and charitable events with philanthropic giving of more than $108,000 in 2018. And I promise it's the last one. Whereas Navigator Credit Union continues to be a member-owned, not-for-profit financial institution honoring its mission statement of building a legacy of excellence for our members through service, commitment, and substantial value. Now therefore, I, Dane Maxwell, mayor as authorized by the city council of Pascagoula in recognition of eight decades as a member-owned, not-for-profit financial institution founded and based continually in Pascagoula proclaimed June 24, 2019 as Navigator Credit Union Day. And witness whereof, I've set my hand in the cause seal to be fixed of the city of Pascagoula. Congratulations.
I just want to say real quick if I can, thank you so much for letting us serve the community. We love Pascagoula. Of course, we have branches from Gulfport to Daphne, Alabama, but our heart is Ingalls Shipbuilding. We love Pascagoula, so thank you for having us. And we're having a birthday party on Monday, June 24th, at all of our branches, so if you'd like to stop by and celebrate with us, we'd love to have you.
Okay, thank you again so much for, for doing that and for being here tonight. We next recognize the upcoming Carver High School reunion. Councilman Jones will read and present the proclamation.
Mr. Jackie Ellis, could you come up here, please? Would you come up, please? Come on up here, Mr. Jackie.
This proclamation, whereas the Pascagoula Negro Carver High School Alumni Association is planning a school reunion on June 30 to July 7, 2019. And whereas a reunion, a special occasion that provides a time of fellowship, renewing of old friendships, and reminiscing on old times that's gone by. And whereas though the Pascagoula Negro Carver High School, it may be no more the essence of its mission and commitment goes on through the graduates. And whereas the lesson learned both in the classrooms and hallways remain with each graduate. And whereas hundreds of the former students will be attended and will be asked by the alumni to wear blue and white every day during the week of the reunion. Now therefore, I, Dane Maxwell, now therefore, our Dane Maxwell, now therefore, our Dane Mayor of the city of Pascagoula, Mississippi, do hereby declare June 30 to June 7, 2019 as Haunted Week in the city of Pascagoula. Acknowledge July 4 to July 7, 2019 as Pascagoula Negro High School Weekend. Dane Maxwell, Mayor. Congratulations.
All right, let's.
Well, you know, you don't have to say something.
Well, come on, do it real short. Now you got about five seconds.
You hitting on somebody's Dane Maxwell.
You know, I appreciate everything. Thank you, thank you.
We want to get a picture of you all.
Sure, yeah, please do.
Those who, those who don't know that, I'm using short words. First of all, we thank you for the proclamation.
Sure.
But what I would like to do, if it's possible, I would like to give it back to you and ask you, if it's possible, on July 6 at our ball that we have, in our awards ball, where our alumni will be present if you or your destiny would be able to come and present it to the entire Alumni Association.
It'd be our honor.
Okay, thank you. So we give that back to you.
Okay.
The second thing is that we do ask that if the city council would consider the week of June 30 to July, they send the letter that we sent earlier, to July 7, is to encourage all businesses in Pascagoula to adorn their building with blue and white to show the participation. Presently, we have 400 people that are pre-registered from our Alumni Association, but we expect at least five to, five, between five and 600 people to come, to come to town. It's especially important to us because some of you, most of you are too young to probably remember, but Carver High School closed in 1970. And we're still alive and well by what we do. I thank the assistant clerk, Frank Carter, I've known for a number of years, and a lot of Reverend Jones, Farnett, and the reason I say that, because they are heirs or their parents or family members also attended Carver with us. And we think it's important for our young people to remember the history of what happened in Pascagoula. I also want to thank the city council. This is my fourth time coming to the city council asking for these things, but I'm hopeful to go out as president. It's been eight years and I'm trying to turn the reins over to someone else. But I also want to thank the city council and I certainly want to thank the Pascual School District Superintendent Wayne Redoffich for all what he has done to help our students. For a long time, a lot of people didn't want to realize or recognize that Carver even existed. But working with Superintendent Redoffich and the school board, they have made it known and recognized that we did exist and we continue to exist in this community. So we say thank you very much for the proclamation and we ask you to remember something. Our parade, I think we already have a schedule of our events, and we ask all of you to participate in those events that we have. For any other information, my name, email, number is on the letter. Feel free to contact us, please. But we really encourage you to participate with us. So, Mr. Mayor, I give this back to you.
Thank you. We'll make sure you get it back.
And thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we, we're going to recognize some true American heroes. Councilman Tipton will read and present this proclamation.
Probably won't be quite as animated as the Reverend Jones.
Thank you very much.
It's my honor to read the proclamation. Whereas the United States Army National
Whereas, the United States Army National Guard was founded before the United States was a country, tracing its roots back to 19, excuse me, 1636, when it formed a militia comprised of colonists organized to defend themselves and their communities. It is the oldest branch of the military. Whereas, organizing the militia into regiments increased its efficiency and responsiveness, which proved critical for the defense of their communities. Its oldest units are the oldest units in the United States military and among the oldest military units in the world. The militia called the National Guard since 1916 has served community, state, and nation for nearly 400 years, and its citizen soldiers have fought in every major American conflict from 1637 to present-day operations in Afghanistan and Iraq. Whereas, more than 138,000 guardsmen were mobilized for Korea, followed by numerous smaller mobilizations for Berlin Crisis, Vietnam, and numerous strikes and riots at home. Approximately 63,000 Army Guardsmen were called to serve in Desert Storm, and in the decades since, the Guardsmen have been sent to a greater role than ever before, conducting peacekeeping in Somalia, Haiti, Saudi Arabia, Kuwait, Bosnia, and Kosovo. Whereas, following the attacks of September 11, 2001, Guardsmen were called up by both their states and the federal government to provide security at home and combat terrorism abroad. Today, in additional to its usual stateside requirements and peacekeeping missions, the Army National Guard is heavily engaged in both Iraq and Afghanistan. Whereas, the citizen soldiers who make up the National Guard have fought in every major war since 1637 and changed a great deal, and today's guard must be prepared to fight in a high-technology environment using complex weapons and equipment. Whereas, Pascagoula has been home to the Mississippi Army National Guard 859 Vertical Engineering Company since it was founded in 1951 as the 148th. It has also been known as the 890th. On June 29, this company of more than 150 men and women will answer the call to serve and leave us for Kuwait as the only contingent of citizen soldiers from the great state of Mississippi. Now therefore, Dane Maxwell Mayor proclaims Saturday, June 29, 2019, Hometown Heroes Day in honor of the men and women of the United States Army National Guard 859 Vertical Engineering Company in Pascagoula, Mississippi. Your community sends you off with our prayers, a safe return, and success for your mission, and your support of our great nation. Thank you.
No, I just want to say, thank y'all. This is the first one I've ever been to, this proclamation. But I really think we'd get it framed, we'd put it up in the armory. So, whoever comes by can see it, and we want to thank y'all again for this coming up Saturday and the 29th. We'll be leaving the 29th. We have our send-off on the 22nd, and the city have done really, really well by helping us with that, taking care of it. And I want to take y'all with me.
Sorry? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Jackie.
Yes, sir. Allen Engineering has done our storm water management contract for several years, and part of that is required annual elected official storm water training. Basically, this is kind of your brief coverage as to why storm water permits are important, both for us to follow and for our contractors and for us to enforce them. So, with that, Paul Lanning is here to provide that training, and if you'll give him just a few minutes, we'll get that covered and move on.
Okay. I appreciate y'all's time. Tonight is always difficult to get in front of mayors and boards, so I do appreciate your time. It's going to be impossible to follow everything that's transpired so far, but I'll try to do my best. So, all right, so, growth readiness training, as Jackie said, is why I'm here. So, why we manage storm water? Well, a couple of main reasons. First is water quantity. So, now, more than ever, you're having larger rain events, more thunderstorms, more rain in the same areas. So, you get more localized flooding, get drainage channels that are clogged, or storm water inlets get clogged, so you can get streets that are flooded, and if it floods enough, you can get residents that are also flooded. And also, as far as the Phase II storm water program, water quality is the major issue that it addresses. So, back in 1988, 1990, you had the EPA report to Congress that storm water was a leading cause of water quality impairment. So, with that, Congress amended the Clean Water Act, which regulated that EPA would regulate storm water and non-point source pollution. Well, that trickled down to the state. So, the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality prepared a storm water permit, and a part of that storm water permit, one of the requirements is the cities or all the municipalities that are regulated have to prepare a storm water management plan. And I'll touch on a little bit of that in this presentation. So, a lot of this is pretty obvious, but as development increases, obviously, water runoff increases because that water can't percolate into the ground, hits the roofs, streets, driveways, sidewalks, and runs into the storm drains, and they get overflowed with large rain events. This is just, you know, there's like 39 or 40 regulated entities within the state from Pascagoula, pretty much every major city and county, and even like University of Southern Mississippi and Houston Air Force Base. So, EPA has six minimum measures. Public education and outreach, public involvement, illicit discharge detection elimination, construction storm water controls, post-construction storm water controls, and municipal pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So, in that storm water management plan that the city has to prepare and submit to DQ, it has to address each of these six minimum measures, and within each of those six, you have subcategories of best management practices. So, for example, public education outreach, this elected official training is one of the best management practices that you have to follow. Public involvement could be like a workshop or presentation, or even, this may be getting back to public education, but a lot of times, cities have like a portion of the website that's storm water, so you may have different kind of flyers and brochures that citizens get access. Illicit discharge detection elimination, you need to make sure that you are minimizing any kind of chemical spills, or, you know, citizens pouring oil down drains, which you don't really see a lot of these days, but where up in Jackson, where I'm from, in my neighborhood, years ago, people would pour crawfish bowl stuff down storm drains because they don't realize that it goes to the creeks. Construction storm water controls, which is what I'm going to talk about a lot in this presentation, because what I see a lot in the years that I've done storm water management program for my clients, is that sediment from runoff from construction is a leading cause. And then, post-construction, making sure you have detention retention basins, and then municipal pollution prevention and housekeeping, make sure your public works facilities, any kind of city facility is, you know, you've got there oil and diesel and gas with secondary containment and that type. So, like I said, you know, the city, Pascagoula has a five-year permit, and the last permit expired in 2013. This permit was issued in 2016. DQ is still reviewing the latest storm water management plan that Pascagoula submitted to the state. They just had a lot of turnover and whatnot, so they're several years behind schedule. But, all that said, the city's still under the previous program until this new program's established. You don't get like a buy. I know there's several, I've been through a number of audits lately with DQ, and I know some other municipalities just kind of, since the last one expired, they just take it off. They just don't do anything, but that's not really how you're supposed to do it. And also, if you don't follow these guidelines, you can be fined. I'm not going to name names, but there's municipalities in my neck of the woods up in Jackson that have been fined year after year, $30,000 a year, because they're not doing what they're supposed to do as part of this. So, what to expect under the new permit? Tighter construction standards. I'm going to say green infrastructure, but it's really just alternative storm water management. Ordinance updates, you just make sure you're reviewing the ordinances yearly to see if there's anything that DQ really wants it to be iterative, so every year, you kind of expand it, make it better and better. Record keeping, you know, every, roughly every five years, the DQ will come to your municipality and audit your program. And the biggest thing they look for is paperwork. You know, if you said, hey, we had elected official training June 18, where's the proof that you had it? Obviously, it's on the agenda, you have the slides, so you have the evidence. DQ's the biggest thing, all the audits I've been through is paperwork. Make sure you have the paperwork. And then, in the DQ inspections, they're just increasing their frequency of inspections, and it seems like there's more experience, they're just increasing the fines that they're laying out. So, the city's responsibilities for storm water management, this aren't all of them, but it's just some, educate, involve the public, I didn't realize these were like this. Maintain clean facilities, prevent pollution, permit one to five acre construction, I'll talk about that in a second, and then inspect new construction. So, construction requirements, obviously, you can see this, you're just some pictures of cell fences kind of been taken over, and then the one bottom right, they don't have cell fences at all, so that dirt's getting in the neighborhood and getting into the storm drain system. So, the construction requirements, one acre to five acres, local permitting, and then five acres and larger is permitted directly through DQ. And whether it's one acre to five acre or five acres and larger, they have to have a storm water management plan. The only difference is the storm water management plan, or the storm water pollution prevention plan, I'm sorry, from one acre to five acre doesn't have to be submitted to DQ. It just has to be locally available. Some cities make contractor developers submit it to the city, I don't think they have to, but it has to be, it has to be. And so, I noticed, I looked at the storm water ordinance for Pascagoula this morning, and I noticed the language under Article VI Policy, Section A permitting, doesn't quite read like that, so you may want to get the staff to review how it's worded, because it says one acre to five, or one acres, one to five acres of land disturbance. Permit required from the city and from DQ, I might would add, just SWIP is required. So, that's just, not trying to be critical, I just something I've noticed. Everything else in the storm water ordinance looks great, even have a portion that's illicit discharge detection elimination, which not all municipalities have, so that's good. So, what is the storm water pollution prevention plan? Basically, it's how the contractor developer is going to minimize runoff from the site during construction. So, make sure that sediment doesn't get on the road, into the storm drains, into our waterways, because we want to keep the water quality as best we can. You can't, you know, make it 100%, but we can do everything we can to approve it. And contractors are required to implement the SWIP and conduct regularly weekly inspections. They have to conduct at least four a month, so if you have a five-week month, you don't have to have one that fifth week, but you're supposed to have regular inspections, and those inspections are supposed to be on-site. So, if DQ for some reason went to that site, those inspections should be there. And then, like I said, and they should maintain inspection logs. So, Pascagoula staff, you know, you need a permit to construction activities, you need to periodically inspect it, whether it's just during the building inspection, make sure they have their cell fences up, that type of thing. If they don't have it, enforcement, you know, make sure you have a stop work order until they fix it. Record keeping, make sure you keep a record of your inspections, you know, you notified so-and-so on July 15 that, you know, cell fence wasn't. You know, manage the municipal projects just like private projects, and report any major violation to DQ. As I said before, DQ's increasing the frequency of inspections on construction sites, you know, make sure they have the SWIPs in those inspection logs. Already kind of covered that. So, developing with minimal impact, this is something that the new storm water permit that DQ issued back in 2016, that picture a few slides ago, EPA really pushed them to add this, maintain this one-inch rainfall when it hits a property. They didn't, EPA didn't demand that the state do it, but they highly encouraged them. So, they say, put it in, which I was a little surprised by, but it basically, it's talking about, you have to manage one inch of rainfall without it leaving the site, which is a little bit different. And a good example, if you want the staff to look at that a little bit further, since I don't think we're in a contract anymore, is city of Chattanooga in Tennessee. They've been under it since 2016, and they have a portion of the website that's just phenomenal, and they'd be a good model to follow. So, this is kind of a screenshot of there, so they use SOV, stay-on volume. So, basically, you do all these calculations to figure out what impact that development has on the site, and you kind of calculate what that one inch looks like, so if it's a, you know, this area that you have to do like a small rain garden to manage that one inch. So, you calculate the velvet area on-site, calculate cubic feet by that one inch, and then design the site to manage it. So, whether it's evapotranspiration, infiltration, and down here on the coast, where you have sand, it's a lot easier than where I'm from in Jackson, where you have the clay soils. So, you guys down here will be a little bit easier to implement than where I live. So, what changes during our future? So, as I kind of touched on, green infrastructure, basically, the water hits the roof or the sidewalk or the driveway, goes in the inlet, goes in the storm sewer, goes in the creeks, marshes, and then the Gulf of Mexico. Green infrastructure tries to manage it as soon as it hits the ground, whether it's rooftop garden, like far right, or if it's a dry well, far left. Basically, it is managing it soon as it hits the ground. So, frequent rainfall plus too much paved area plus more development equals flooding. I mean, I don't have to tell you the guys this, and that can have a big impact on city resources from the police department, the fire department, to, you know, loss of life, loss of property. This is a picture from Houston years ago, and they're flooding. The last picture was from Jackson, some are flooding. So, I'm not going to read all that, but basically, as I said a second ago, managed, green infrastructure manages storm water at its source. So, some of the types of green infrastructure, you have downsput disconnections, so instead of running those downsput states straight to the storm drain, you may run it to a rain barrel or some type of flower bed that has some type of overflow structure. Rainwater harvesting, rain gardens, planter boxes. The two big ones are rain gardens and bioswells. That's what you kind of see the most of. Green roofs are good, but they're expensive, and not everybody's open to those. And land conservation, if you have the land, is more like on a county level, would be a good policy. So, I'm going to go through just a few of them. So, trees, examples of green infrastructure, intercept and absorb rainfall, obviously, reduce urban heat damage effect, improves habitat and aesthetic value, and prevents shade in summer, and reduces greenhouse gases. Rain barrels and cisterns, this is a picture from up in Sartre along with Mississippi State, so this is the Octavia County Heritage Museum, and they have a whole green infrastructure, the whole site is like that. But, this is a rain barrel cistern, they use it to irrigate the flowers around it. This is Mississippi, on the campus of Mississippi State, there's a rain garden, just example of how they tie the roof, the downsputts into this rain garden, let the water infiltrate instead of running off and going into the storm drain. Porous pavement, there's actually, later on in this agenda, you're putting in porous pavement at Point Park, I think it was. So, that's an example of your implementing green infrastructure, and it's using tidings fund, so it's not costing you anything. So, that's good. And of course, this, you know, lets that water infiltrate into the ground instead of running off. And, you know, when that water hits a normal concrete, it's going to take all those hydrocarbons and everything that the cars drop and people drop, and it's going to go straight to the storm drains. So, purpose paid, and this is a good option. And then, green space, if you have it, obviously, allows that water to percolate to the ground. Parking lot islands, you know, I know parking requirements are very strict, and it's tough to meet sometimes, you know, balancing square footages versus parking, but if you have the room for a parking lot island, that's a good way to get water into the ground as opposed to in the storm drains. There's this, in conclusion, DQ expects a higher standard with this five-year plan, better record keeping, more inspections, new local ordinances, better management of storm water on the site, and then the increased use of green infrastructure. So, I'm going to end there, but I'm going to, a couple more things. So, one of the other requirements in that new permit they issued was to develop a design standard manual, and it's basically how are developers and contractors going to handle that one inch, it's basically giving them guidance. So, that's something that's probably going to pull some of your city's resources as far as staff to prepare that design standard. And then, like I said before, it's important because, it's important to implement all this stuff, one, to improve water quality, but two, like I said, DQ comes through every now and then and audits you, and they want to make sure that you're doing what you're saying. So, you submit a handle report at the end of the year, and they just kind of periodically come through and look at like last year's January report, and make sure you're doing what you're saying you're doing. So, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Again, I appreciate your time, so, any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, we're now on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signature five, a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is city manager.
All right, the item that y'all have before you is ordinance or proposed ordinance number This is the proposed comptroller ordinance that was prepared with Mr. Burrows' recommended revisions at the last council meeting. So, at this point, I believe it would be a So at this point, I believe it would be appropriate for y'all to consider whether or not to adopt it.
All right, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'll just say this, you know, I've commented before that I've kind of been on the fence. I see some good points about it and have some doubts about it. You know, one of the things I've been kind of researching and pulled the attorney general's opinion. And to me, we still have some real questions about the legality of it. Just because in the opinion, it goes on to say that, that the city clerk slash comptroller is a combined position in our municipality. I'd asked a question before, we have a city clerk, whether it's going to affect or whether it's going to be one person. But due to that, I mean, I just had some issues with approving it at this time.
And everybody knows I've made myself clear on where I'm going to be. I'm not going to support this. So with that, all in favor, signal five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any votes?
Nay.
All right.
Yeah.
Nay, nay. Everybody else, I guess, says yes. All right, Frank?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. I've got a number of handouts to, for your consideration, just for review. Wanted to make sure you all received them. Ms. Comer, if you wouldn't mind, help me spread these around. First one is a resume from Mr. Martin Higwood. Mr. Higwood is applying to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission. If you remember, we sent out advertisements for those resumes a while back. None received. He's now received. We've received his, making you aware of this one. We will have it on the next agenda for our interview like we have in the past, and in your consideration going forward. That's the first item there. Second item passed out to you is the FY 2020 budget timeline, just making you aware. Ms. Charlene, the comptroller's office is working through this. We handed out our departmental budget request forms this past week. They're working on those. This gives you a rough timeline of what to expect for this budget cycle. Next is, this is, a while back, you, a few of you had expressed the interest in considering, once again, the possibility of consolidating voting precincts within our city. This is a memo from the clerk's office on, on that for your review. And should council so choose to consider this at a later date, we can bring it back to you. However, this is just some information to give you some direction on that. The next thing I have is a memo regarding county paving. There's been some conversation at the county level about how these funds should, or how these, this paving should be requested, not funds, but the paving should be requested. This is just an update on where that stands, and then staff will be bringing you back recommendations going forward based on this new and developing information from the county. And the last thing I have for you is, next week is the MML conference in Biloxi. This is a packet that is the agenda for the event. Most of you have signed up to go. Highlighted in there are recommended classes for your take, dealing with, you know, city finances or city law or different things that may help. Well, I will make mention that Mr. Tipton is actually receiving his basic certification as a certified official. So I'm definitely honor him for that. So a lot of hours been put in over the years for that, so congrats on that.
Took six years.
Yes. Just wanted to note that as well, that he is receiving his, his certification, so we, we want to note that. But with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. All right, Mr. Scrugg, you're up next.
Good evening. I'm out pretty quick. The planning department is constantly, or at least routinely, getting requests from food truck vendors to locate at various locations here in town. The ordinance that we work under has steps to address the food truck vendors, and it allows them to set up on city owned or public properties, especially in the downtown area. We've got a couple of locations that we've worked with them in the past, but they're really not, they're kind of out of the way. They really do not lend themselves to good foot traffic, which is what you try to do with, with these food truck vendors. In a meeting with Main Street with Ms. Rebecca Davis and Michelle Coates, we were discussing where we could do this and what the city could do to potentially encourage additional vendors. And we began to explore the idea of a lot that is here on, between Watts and Delmas on Kenny, basically behind the Brunkbell Lot, as a potential location for a food truck court. I discussed it with the county administrator, Brian Fulton, and he was very receptive of the idea. So what he requested is that we come to city council and have a request put forth by this body to more or less, you know, see if a donation would be possible. I use the word donation of a lease, meaning that we don't intend for the county to donate this parcel to us because ultimately, we want to see it reused and with a brick and mortar type structure that will go there and, you know, increase our tax base and downtown viability. But in the meantime, it's a vacant lot that's really not doing a whole lot. So the idea is to incorporate a food truck court that may bring a little more viability to our downtown area. And, you know, the way I look at it is, it's kind of a, an amenity more so than an actual business. These things have really spread pretty tremendously over the years. And I think they're called foodies or truckies or various different terms. But they are a, they're attractive, and people, I believe, would actually come downtown to, to eat there that would normally not visit some of our other bricks and mortar type establishments. I mean, they're, you sound, it's like, I compare it sometimes, they need to a, what you would get at a Pee Wee baseball game out of a food truck. I mean, it's a little bit different, of course, than the ones now are much more advanced than what I ate out of, at a Pee Wee ballgame, but they are still a food truck, you know, wrapped gyro, wrapped sandwich, or whatever else it may be. This is a proposed site that I've looked at and have requested, I've talked to Brian about. And, you know, as far as what our plans are, if approved, it could be pretty basic. You know, a short term example is just, you know, some food trucks parked along there, the city or PRA, or Main Street providing some receptacles, maybe some power hookups, something very minimal, so that generators aren't running constantly. But a really low key approach on the front end, you know, they're, they're temporary and they're, they move. So there is not a whole lot required for them. You know, a different approach would be, of course, to drop some picnic tables in the area and some umbrellas for shade. Once again, the idea is to attract more people downtown. Attracting more people downtown could cause them to, you know, go to additional restaurants, you know, maybe go to some of the bars we have. Maybe demonstrate that there is opportunity beyond the hours of two o'clock or three o'clock in the afternoon, and actually extend those hours, stay later. You know, possibly show that there is a market for late night dining in downtown Pasagoula as well. What we look at this is more or less to establish that there is a need for some downtown, or for more options and choices downtown, and hopefully encourage more of our businesses to do that, and also encourage new businesses to open. The, you know, finally, you know, when you accomplish a plan, you know, does address, you know, what we're talking about here. You know, the need for more pedestrian type activities, more to encourage small businesses to start up. And that's what these are. They're small businesses, entrepreneurs, that, you know, may not be able to invest. I think I have a building on my desk right now that's about a $1.2 million restaurant. So, you know, sometimes, not everybody can just pull that off quickly. But a food truck is something that they can try out. If it does not work, they can sell it to somebody else. I mean, it is not a long term commitment, and maybe it would encourage them to move out and actually establish a restaurant, you know, in our downtown area. The, you know, some of the benefits, we tried to enumerate when we were talking about this, it does provide a more centralized location that would allow us to more or less to regulate it. They pop up now through agreements with private property owners. There's one down by Ingalls trying to address those lunchtime crowds. But we believe that court, you know, when it's in session, and the attorneys and judges and everybody else who's being convicted wants to come over here. And they don't have time for the last meal to sit down and scratch, so they can just grab a quick gyro as a shuffloffing. Police car would be an option. I do think they will be a draw to our downtown. And I think it's, you know, quick and easy. Folks can not worry about an hour or two hour meeting. I mean, they can walk out of their office, grab a sandwich, and go back. So I think it is something that could work out. We are working on some of the policies for this. Right now, all we're asking for is to ask the county if they can have it. If the county says yes, then we have to come up with some policies, and we plan to present those back to this body. But, you know, we plan to rent the spaces to vendors, so we'll be regulated. People just can't quill in, you know, sell something and leave. If you're not supposed to be there, you can't be there. We want to maintain that everybody who is serving has a rating, that we're not having, you know, food that may not be safe to eat in our food court. We definitely want to pay taxes, you know, both the city tax and the recreational taxes that are associated with bed and breakfast. So we want to get every prepared food tax, I'm sorry. And we want reports to go to Main Street, who we intend to be the body who oversees this activity. We want to encourage some of our local businesses that may have food trucks, that, hey, you may be able to come down here and set up yourself and work with things to either give them discounted spaces or free spaces, or some other, some other preferred status. And the same thing with, say, Jackson County residents, and then Mississippi residents, and then, of course, Alabama. But, you know, as, we want to make sure that Pasagoula is getting its required portion of any sales tax that are generated from these improvements. The, somebody mentioned alcohol sales today in our discussions. And I don't believe those could happen without some improvements, like a fence or gate tech that allows people to actually sit in there and do that. Right now, that's not on my pictures. We don't really plan to, to do that at this time. If it's a demand for it, and we think it's something that would work, we may entertain that later. But right now, we're strictly a food vendor court. And like, Main Street, you know, will adopt some formal regulations and provide them to you for review. But that's, that's the idea that we've kind of come up with. We've got some, you know, PRA has endorsed it in their meeting yesterday. Main Street, I believe, we presented it to their board, and that board was very, very excited about this. You know, we see this as promoting downtown Pasagoula and trying what other people have shown to be successful. We think it's add something different and something new. And sometimes you've got to try something new if you're going to not do the same old way. Be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
My first question is out of courtesy to the people who have stayed in Pasagoula and been loyal to Pasagoula. The Scrantons, the Paradise Grill, Jack's on the Tracks, Off the Hook. Have we contacted them to ask for their feedback on how they're going to react to this? Because unless we have a study or something that will prove it's going to increase the activity down here, and we're not going to be taking business from those brick and mortar?
Yeah.
We, I mean, I think it's a great idea. I don't want to be, I'm not trying to be negative. But we've got to do our due diligence to make sure we don't hurt the businesses that have been here for many years and have been loyal to the city of Pasagoula.
Right. We have not reached out to individual businesses to, you know, see how all of their feelings are on this before we get, you know, too deep into a significant amount of research on all this. First question's got to be asked is, does this body want to ask for it? And then, does the, does the county have any desire to actually let us have it? You know, it's a lease that's going to be month to month. It can be expired anytime that we wish to, so we can do that. As far as, you know, my perspective on it is, there's a pretty good bit of data that shows throughout this country that these are successful in drawing people, you know, and to, to the, to the locations. So I think it is going to be a benefit. Now, you know, Pasagoula's daytime population is approximately, you know, 45,000 people.
But they go to Ingalls, and they don't come out for lunch. They have food trucks and cafeteria.
There's, I think the study says there's maybe 10,000 people that work in Ingalls. So there's 35,000 people in Pasagoula proper that are available to eat. And I don't believe, you know, four or five true food trucks are going to, you know, significantly impact the existing restaurants.
Well, they come out, there's a one over the East Bank.
Right.
Yeah, it's right there at the East Bank, but they're not going to come downtown Pasagoula. And if all these people come downtown, where are they going to park? Just out of curiosity. They're not going to park at the parking garage and walk over here.
Oh, no. There's plenty of parking downtown Pasagoula.
Shannon, you're a business guy. You own a restaurant. What's your thought? Put you on the spot.
That's okay. I'm in favor of it. Ms. Comer said something, I distinctly remember Richard Tenen with the Scranton saying, he would welcome competition in downtown because it creates an environment where people come. I don't know if that's still his case. I haven't talked about this at all, but I, I, DQ, we're totally in favor. I think it's good for the city. I think this kind of activity brings us to a better place of causing people to pay attention to downtown. So I'm in favor.
Well, I, I talked to Chad and Stephen Brady, and they support competition.
Oh, it's not, I, I, look, don't misinterpret what I'm saying. I'm not trying to be negative, but I just want to weigh out all the things and make sure that we honor the people who've stayed committed to the city of Pasagoula and have not left us.
Hey, Donald, on another note, as far as the food vendors go and the food trucks, I'm seeing these pop up in neighborhoods, east side of town, all over places that really aren't set up for these food trucks. How are we monitoring them as far as taxes, basically getting the sales tax revenue from them, and just support staying on top of?
I mean, the one.
For instance, I saw one on Hospital Road in one of the apartment complexes.
All that later parts.
Yeah, that's the one I asked about.
Yeah, I asked about it. Called Mr. Carter about it the other day.
Yeah.
That one's been approved. The one down here on, on Soto, Kenny, by the East Bank, has been approved. So I mean, you know, the ones that we're aware of, you know, we approve. The reporting is through the Department of Revenue. We don't monitor that. What we plan to.
Should we? I mean.
I don't know that we're allowed to with, in those situations. Those are all on private property. It's just like saying, are you paying your sales tax? You know, that's between you and the government, and you better be doing.
We are the government, because we're collecting part of the sales.
We don't collect it, not the sales tax. I mean, we get reimbursements from them. We, I came and called them and say, what was the sales tax on Dairy Queen?
I'm sure there's somebody, a point of contact there that we can say, hey, there's a business that's opened up here, and we should be.
Yeah, well, I mean, what we hope to do with this is actually work with.
I mean, this would be great. I'm not saying, you know, this, this looks like it'd be a way to actually.
Yeah, this one, the idea on this particular project would be that we are hoping to have the ability to go by and collect envelopes at the end of the day, or at least have them drop it off here at the, you know, accounting department for collections. That would be ideal, and if we can do that, that would be a route we go. The ones that are out.
There is a contact, a DLR that does.
Do that. So if you have an issue with a local business, or you see they're not charging the tax properly, let us know, and we can contact them.
I just did that.
I mean, there's several restaurants that took forever to add this, you know, the 10%.
I saw one the other day that wasn't collecting sales tax at all. I went in there and ate, and then I was, Donald was in there, and I was like, hey. They didn't charge me sales tax, so we called on them, and so now.
Mr. Scrugg.
Yes.
Say, I'm a vendor, Ms. Comer's a vendor, Mr. Beryl's a vendor. How do you, what method do you, you too, or Mr. Beryl, you're a vendor, you'll be a vendor. How do, what process do you use, selecting which vendor serves, and how long?
The, those are. The, those are policies that we really have not explored, you know. We don't know if we're going to, I mean, the idea potentially of acquiring some, you know, after-hours type of tenure or some weekend stays are things we're considering because we know like late night or Saturday night-
This is not an all-day setup, just-
If somebody wants to sit up there, you know, 24, not, what, 24/7, I'm not sure that we'd be opposed to that. I mean, you know, I believe the market's going to dictate, you know, when they are there.
The reason why I'm asking is, that should be something to be used for still using the same vendors for a certain period of time, because once that began, I'm sure we're going to have a lot of people that want to participate.
Now, that we will regu, I mean, the idea is, if we get to where there's not enough space and that, you know, we can then begin to say-
This is just for the downtown area?
It's for this one lot that we have, right here, we plan to get.
Yeah.
But the idea would be that we have a variety where they come in and out, come in and out. And if we have enough interest of where we've got 10 or 15 that want to go there, and only spots for five or six, then we would say, you only have so many days a month that you can do it in. We, what we, what makes these things, I think, so attractive to many municipalities is it's not the same meal every day, you know, 365. You may have tacos one day, you may have gyros one day, you may have something completely different, all vegan one day, those who like that. I mean, you've got a ton of variety that can be awkward, that you cannot get by just changing out the menu once every two months.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and get the ball rolling. We're not committing ourselves to anything. This is still a process in its infancy, so I see no harm in going ahead and making a motion to authorize the city manager to request a donation of a certain parcel from the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to potentially operate as a mobile food vendor court.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you for that.
All right.
Good deal, Mr. Scrugg.
Claim stock.
Yeah. Good job.
Is there a motion to approve the claim stock?
So move. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye? Any opposed? All right. No one addressed council, so now, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I had one item, it's more of an announcement under mayor council items that, just for everyone's information that are both here and watching us on Facebook, that the Pascagoula Men's Club is hosting a sixth annual inshore fishing challenge in Covia Snapper Shootout this Saturday, June 22nd, at Lighthouse Park in Pascagoula. There will be live music and food, and everything starts at 1:00, and it will shut down, we hope, sometime around 7:00. So the public is welcome, and would love to see everyone there if you have nothing better to do on Saturday afternoon.
Okay. Thank you for that, and thank everybody for coming this evening. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session to determine the need for executive session.
So move.
So.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Scott, are you, is he in the running to be a vice president? It just says MML.
Yeah.
It just says Councilor Tipton, I don't know.